Good evening. I'd like to call to order the October 27th, 2015 School Board Meeting of Seminole County, Florida. At this point in time, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Jeff Bauer for invocation and pledge.
Good evening, everybody. Because one of my favorite holidays is coming up this Saturday, I thought it might be appropriate tonight to highlight some of the history of Halloween. As we all know, Halloween is a holiday celebrated on the night of October 31st. The word "Halloween" is a shortening of "All Hallows' Evening," also known as "Hallowen" or "All Hallows' Eve. Although many traditions involved in the holiday date back thousands of years, it is surprising to many people that the holiday, as is currently celebrated in America, is relatively new by comparison. Traditional Halloween activities include trick-or-treating, bonfires, costume parties, visiting haunted houses, and carving jack-o'-lanterns. Irish and Scottish immigrants carried versions of the tradition to North America in the 19th century. Other Western countries embraced the holiday in the late 20th century, including Ireland, Canada, Puerto Rico, and the United Kingdom, as well as Australia and New Zealand. Halloween has its origins in the ancient Celtic festival known as Saw-Win. The festival Saw-Win is a celebration at the end of the harvest season in Gaelic culture. Saw-Win was a time used by ancient pagans to take stock of supplies and prepare for winter. The ancient Gales, think Gaelic Ireland rather than Roman Gauls, believed that on October 31st, the boundaries between the worlds of the living and the dead overlapped, and the deceased world came back to life to cause havoc, such as sickness or damaged crops. The festival would frequently involve bonfires. It is believed that these fires attracted insects to the areas where they were lit, which attracted bats to the area. Thus, bats became part of the Halloween tradition. These pagan beliefs were eventually interwoven into the calendar of the Roman Catholic Church with the establishment of the Holy Days of All Saints' Day, which is celebrated on November 1st, and All Souls' Day, which is celebrated on November 2nd. Similar fall harvest rituals in Central and South America evolved over the past two millennia into the still-celebrated Day of the Dead festivals, honoring and celebrating the lives and spirits of those who have passed. Trick-or-treating is an activity for children on or around Halloween, in which they proceed from house to house in costumes, asking for treats, such as confectionery, sugar or chocolate, with the question "trick or treat." The trick part of the trick-or-treat is a threat to play a trick on the homeowner or his property, if you grew up in the '70s or '80s, think toilet paper, if no treat is given. Trick-or-treating is one of the main traditions of Halloween. It has become socially expected that if one lives in a neighborhood with children, one should purchase treats in preparation for the trick-or-treaters. Part of the history of Halloween is Halloween costumes. The practice of dressing up in costumes and begging, quote-unquote, "door-to-door for treats" on holidays goes back to the Middle Ages and includes Christmas "whassaling." Trick-or-treating resembles the late medieval practice of "soling," when poor folk would go door-to-door on Halloween, which was November 1st, receiving food in return for prayers for the dead on All Souls' Day, November 2nd. It originated in Ireland and Britain, and although similar practices for the souls of the dead were found as far south as Italy. Shakespeare mentions the practice in his comedy, "The Two Gentlemen of Verona." And here are some quick facts, fun facts about Halloween. The first jack-o'-lanterns were actually made from turnips. Halloween is the second-highest grossing commercial holiday after Christmas. The word "witch" comes from the Old English "wissy," meaning "wise woman." In fact, Wiccan were highly respected people at one time. According to popular belief, witches held one of their two main meetings, or Sabbaths, on Halloween night. In Ohio, Iowa, Massachusetts, the night designated for trick-or-treating is often referred to as "Beggars' Night." An intense, persistent fear of Halloween is called "semahenphobia." I think I pronounced that right. Fifty percent of children prefer to receive chocolate candy for Halloween, compared with 24 percent who prefer non-chocolate candy and 10 percent who prefer gum. The owl is a popular Halloween image. In medieval Europe, owls were thought to be witches, and to hear an owl's call meant someone was about to die. According to Irish legend, jack-o'-lanterns are named after a stingy man named Jack, who, because he tricked the devil several times, was forbidden entrance into both heaven and hell. He was condemned to wander earth, waving his lantern to lead people away from their paths. The first known mention of trick-or-treating in print in North America occurred in 1927 in Blackie, Alberta, Canada. Halloween was influenced by the ancient Roman festival of Panoma, I'm sorry, Pomona, which celebrated the harvest goddess of the same name. Many Halloween costumes and games that feature apples, such as bobbing for apples and nuts, date from this time. In fact, in the past, Halloween has been called "Sand Apple Night" or "Nutcrack Night." Halloween is thought to have originated around 4,000 B.C., which means some Halloween traditions have been around for over 6,000 years. Please have a safe and happy Halloween this coming weekend. Please stand and join me in the pledge.
Thank you, Mr. Bauer. You always educate us on one topic or another. Let the record reflect that all school board members, except for Mrs. Amador, are in attendance, along with our legal counsel and superintendent. And I'd also like to acknowledge the attendance of Jeanne Miller with the Business Advisory Board. Thank you for your service and for coming here this evening. Dr. Griffin, do we have any agenda modifications?
Yes, Madam Chair, there are two. The first is the Addendum for Good Cause is marked on electronic agenda by a green flag named "Addendum Item." And the second is I have a replacement in the superintendent's report, which is item 11A. Instead of discussing the Community Leadership Academy, which I'll bring back to the next meeting, we're going to have an update on 1516 Assessments for Progress Monitoring and Teacher Evaluation.
Thank you. Board members, do you have any items selected for removal or clarifying questions? Member Schaffner?
Yes, I don't think my mic's working.
There it goes. Yes, I'd like a comment on O and Q.
Okay. And Mr. Bauer?
No, thank you.
Vice Chairman Lockhart?
None, thanks.
And I also had a comment on Q. Is there approval for the agenda outline?
So move?
Second. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Dr. Griffin, do we have any presentations or recognitions?
Yes, we do. We have two introductions. Okay, board members, we have two introductions this evening, both Dr. Cummings' and a conference, and Dr. Dillinger was not feeling well, so I'm filling in for them. First is Amy Padilla, Assistant Principal at Parton Elementary Amy is a proud product of Seminole County Public Schools, has been employed with Seminole for the past 16 years. She earned a bachelor's degree in elementary ed from UCF and a master's in ed leadership from the American College of Education. She has spent the last 12 years teaching at both primary and intermediate grade levels while serving on the school leadership committees. Family members in attendance, her husband, and two daughters.[547.04][547.04](APPLAUSE) And next, Debbie Josay, Principal Walker Elementary School.[572.79][572.79](APPLAUSE) Debbie is a graduate of Brock University, UCF, and Nova Southeastern University. Her teaching experience includes teaching in both Volusia and Seminole County. She's taught various grade levels, as well as gift education and reading resource. She has served as an assistant principal at both Wilson Elementary and, most recently, Sterling Park. Family
Good evening. Seminole County continues to focus on ensuring that all students are college and career-ready. The month of October is National Disability Employment Awareness Month. The JET program, or Job Experience Training Program, is one pathway that helps to provide career readiness to our students with disabilities. JET students work alongside with job coaches off-campus in a wide variety of community-based work experiences. During the first nine weeks, students from every high school in Seminole County spent time and work experiences at community sites that included Publix, JoAnn's Fabrics, Chili's, YMCA, Meals on Wheels, Oviedo Car Care, Marshalls, Goodwill, Children's Thrift, Hilton Hotel, and Florida Hospital. We were very honored this month to have Hagerty High School volunteer their TV production team to spend a day with the Hagerty JET students at Chili's and the YMCA in order to give us a glimpse of one of the JET job experiences. I would like to thank the managers from Chili's and YMCA that are here with us this evening and have them stand, Bridget Byrne and Pravat Turner,[701.69][701.69](APPLAUSE) the principal of Hagerty High School, Dr. Mary Williams,[710.04][710.04](APPLAUSE) her TV production teacher, Donna Parker,[716.23][716.23](APPLAUSE) the members of her television production crew, Bryce Dawson, Lauren Watcher, Emily Elwood, and David Casado,[727.82][727.82](APPLAUSE) and last but certainly not least, our amazing JET students, Ryan Goodwin, Michael Vivalo, Daniel DeJesus, and Daniel Muse.[741.73][741.73](APPLAUSE) In addition, I would like to thank the hard work of our transition resource teachers and job coaches, Joyce Davis, Julie Del Russo, who leads the team, and the job coaches that are here with us tonight, Miriam Okendo and Elston Watson.[762.73][762.73](APPLAUSE) All of these people collaborated to bring you the video you're about to see tonight that shows you just one day in the life of JET. Thank you so much. Enjoy.
JET is an unpaid career exploration course. It's an elective class where students get to travel by school bus supervised by a job coach into the community for the purpose of gaining job skills and experience at actual workplaces around their school. This nine weeks, our students from Hagerty High School are working at Chili's and the YMCA. And the purpose of JET is to provide students training in specific fields in their area, actual training taking place by the people that they're working with on-site, in addition to the training they receive from their coaches and me, the transition teacher, at their school. When the goal is to hopefully, as students transition beyond high school, they'll have more skills and abilities and possibly a few connections made in the community to obtain employment after graduation.
My name is Miriam Okendo. I'm a job coach with the Seminole County Public Schools. I am assigned to Oviedo and Hagerty High Schools. I go out with the students to the community, to different job sites, and I supervise them and assist them in learning the jobs they are assigned in different job sites. At this time, I have a group of students working at Chili's. They are portioning the foods and weighing the foods to prepare and have them ready for the staff when they need them to serve for the customer.
My name is Pravat Turner, and my role with JET is the Community Engagement Relations Manager. Giving back to the community, helping people in need, and helping our students perform. Having the JET students here has allowed our team members to create a compassion of people. I mean, we're in the field business, but we're also in the people business.
Hello, I'm Michael Vivalo. I attend Hagerty High School, and I'm involved in the Job Experience Training Program. Well, one thing I did, I worked at four different job sites last year. There were Walgreens, YMCA, Publix, and Atticus Front.
I believe that the JET program has impacted our staff and members in a very positive way. It's great having the kids in the building, seeing them smile, work. It's been a very positive environment all around for the YMCA.
One thing that you'll notice is readily apparent in working with some of the JET students is that they are some of the hardest-working, most motivated individuals that are out there today. And it is our great hope that they will go on to do amazing things in the community with employment. And if people just give them the chance, they'll find out
Congratulations, students, and thank you, teachers and coaches. We are helping to shape the future. Good evening.
Hi. Good evening, board members and Superintendent Griffin. November 11th, Veterans Day is recognized in many ways in our schools. Many honor their faculty and staff members who have served our nation, as well as produce events to pay respect to those who sacrifice for our country. This year, Seminole County Public Schools will also commemorate Veterans Day in some new ways. In our schools, all students will see a brief video on the history of Veterans Day to make sure they understand the reasons why we celebrate and honor that day in our nation. One is for elementary students and one is for secondary students. We're going to take a look at the elementary one tonight.[1030.81][1030.81](MUSIC)
November 11th has long held a historical significance to the United States. Today, we celebrate it as a federal and state holiday called Veterans Day, but it was first incorporated under a different name. At the 11th hour of the 11th day of the 11th month of 1918, an armistice was signed to end fighting between the Allied Nations and Germany. A year later, President Woodrow Wilson declared November 11th as Armistice Day to honor all veterans who served in World War I. People believed this was the war to end all wars, and countries all around the world celebrated lasting peace. In 1954, after both World War II and the Korean War, President Dwight D. Eisenhower signed a bill proclaiming November 11th as Veterans Day to honor veterans of all wars. Each year on November 11th, a national ceremony takes place at the Memorial Amphitheater in Arlington National Cemetery. At 11:00 a.m., a color guard, representative of all branches of the military, executes "present arms" at the Tomb of the Unknowns. The ceremony continues with the laying of the presidential wreath and the playing of taps. Several veteran service organizations participate in the Parade of Flags. Veterans Day stands as a day of celebration and remembrance. It is a day for Americans to honor both living and fallen service members for their patriotism and courage in times of war, as well as peace. From Washington, I'm Petty Officer Liz Blahos.
In addition, all of our schools and facilities will display this banner on their buildings this year with a message about our support for the brave men and women who serve. Along with these, our Office of Communications has assisted us in creating the "Thank a Vet" campaign. High school students were invited to record a short video thanking a veteran. Once created, students are posting these on social media sites with the #ThankAvet. All of those videos will be collected and edited into one video that all schools will be able to air on Veterans Day, November 11. To complement the respectful activities that our schools already support, we look forward to all of these becoming SCPS traditions to highlight the many ways we support and thank our veterans. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I am Trisha Teal. I am the current Chair of the Children's Cabinet of Seminole County. And I would like to thank the school board and Superintendent Griffin for being a member of our Children's Cabinet and an active participant. And I'm here this evening to present a resolution that we have created and we're sending it to Tallahassee to see if we can't get some results that the board has been working diligently to help our students in Seminole County. I would like to just take a moment, for those of you that aren't familiar with what the chair is, we're a collaboration of government agencies, of families, of nonprofits, of individuals. And all through Seminole County, we currently have about 60 members and a lot of others that just attend. And our mission is to do anything and everything to strengthen the children and families in our community. So I'd like to take an opportunity to read the resolution. It's a resolution by the Children's Cabinet of Seminole County, Florida, supporting the use of nationally-normed reference tests in place of using the Florida Standards Assessment, submitted by the Children's Cabinet. Whereas, Florida law requires implementation of an assessment program that provides usable data that school districts and the state can use to improve educational instruction and outcomes. And whereas the use of the Florida Standards Assessment proved disruptive to the educational process, with testing accommodations replacing the priority of instruction, 29 days at our middle schools and 31 days at our high schools. And whereas, Florida legislators have requested identification of valid and reliable alternative testing that will reduce the hours students are engaged in testing. And whereas, the Seminole County School Board has identified that the use of nationally-normed reference tests, such as Iowa Assessment for elementary students and the PSAT SAT for 9th and 10th grades, will fulfill the legislative requirements and educational goals. And whereas, the mission of the Children's Cabinet of Seminole County is developing and integrating services and effectively utilizing resources to address the physical, social, emotional, vocational, transitional, and educational needs of all children and families to produce measurable positive outcomes for the Seminole County community, now, therefore, be it resolved that the Children's Cabinet of Seminole County, 1. supports the Seminole County School Board's efforts to replace the FSA with nationally-normed reference tests, such as the Iowa Assessment and PSAT SAT. Number 2. urges Commissioner Pam Stewart, Florida Department of Education, to support the use of nationally-normed reference tests for our school district. And number 3. urges our state legislators to support the use of nationally-normed reference tests that will reduce the hours that students and schools are engaged in testing. Our cabinet voted on this unanimously October 14th, and I have never seen so many seconds, thirds, and fourths, and fifths when the motion was made. So we appreciate the collaboration and the opportunity to work with you and to do whatever we can to help our community in their educational pursuits. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That concludes our presentations. Madam Chair?
Any school district highlights? And so we're moving on to our questions. Member Schaffner, you had a question on 4O.
Oh, and it's a comment more than a question.
Okay.
I know a couple of years ago, the state moved to have, to provide the PSAT for all of our high school juniors, sophomores, and tomorrow, they're actually taking it, the sophomores are taking the PSAT. But I think this is a great move on our part to provide the SAT for all of our juniors, because a lot, I have seen many a guidance counselor at the high school level write a check for a student who couldn't afford it, and that's not the right thing to do. So this is going to provide the SAT to all juniors, and I just highly support that. I think it's a great move.
Thank you, Ms. Schaffner. I also think it's going to really help us with the unknowns with FSA. We're going to have some coordinate scores for many students, so I think it's the perfect time to do it.
Thank you, Dr. Griffin. And Member Schaffner, you had a question on 4Q as well.
Yes, Mr. Kelly? In reading through 4Q on the internal accounts, are we going to be providing some training? Because I think there's some training needed for some of our bookkeepers and perhaps the principal and the bookkeeper there together, so that there's an understanding of some of the things that are allowable and not allowable?
We are, we're also going to provide training to academic, excuse me, athletic leaders too, and schools, make sure they understand as well, because so much money, particularly in high schools, flows to those athletic programs.
Yeah, because we do a lot of fundraisers and that kind of thing throughout the schools, and it's important for us to keep track of those dollars. So I just feel like it's important for us to have some extensive training.
I agree. The audit didn't.
We had a lot of great, perfect audits.
We did. Not as many as the last year. We do have, I think, 13 schools with perfect audits, so that was.
How many?
Thirteen, if memory serves.
Wonderful.
Yes, very good.
Thank you. I just wanted to be sure we were going to be doing some training, because it's a concern.
And Mr. Kelly, that was additionally my comment as well on this, that I wanted to congratulate what I thought was a very, very good, clean, just very minuscule little things. But I think going forward, for consistency's sake, I didn't know if we had a plan to go forward, because some of the mistakes seemed to be consistent, which were silly ones. But I know we've had staff turnover, because so many of our staff gets promoted from within. So I just wanted to make sure we were timing our training appropriately for staff turnover.
We are working on that. One of our challenges is to try to make sure that whatever we do does not interfere with delivering education to students. I'm starting to understand, going to the superintendent's cabinet meetings, how important it is for principals to be at their schools. So we're trying to find a way to schedule this, and yet still keep them at the schools. So Mr. Cotry, Mrs. Bracco, and I are trying to work that out. We'll begin with the executive directors on scheduling.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments on any other issues? Seeing none, Dr. Griffin, do you have a recommendation on the consent agenda?
Yes, that the consent agenda be approved as presented.
motion to approve.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign motion carries unanimously. And are there any student disciplinary hearing dispugations?
That the school board of Seminole County approve the student disciplinary recommendations from September 28th, 2015, and October 5th, 2015.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign motion carries unanimously. We'll move on to board member committee comments. Member Schaffner, did you attend any committees during this two-week period?
Yes, I have. I have been attending many meetings for Arts Alive, for the foundation. That is, we had, this past week, we had the auditions. Wow, wonderful talent we have out there. We're very, very happy over that. Just about sold out with the tables as well. So I've been doing a lot with Arts Alive for the foundation.
Thank you. Very much.
Wonderful.
And Member Bauer?
No comments. Thank you.
Vice Chairman Lockhart?
It's been a busy last week and this week, and it's going to be a busy next week. I attended both the Zoo Education Committee meeting and the Zoo General Board meeting. Things moving forward beautifully, it sounds like, with Sanford Middle School, with enhancing some of our programs there for our pre-veterinary program in conjunction with the zoo. And then on the other end of the spectrum, we also have, for the first time, Seminole State has developed a class that actually involves zoo science, and that will be offered to their students in the spring. So it would be kind of nice to be able to see a continuum here for students in Seminole County that are interested in veterinary and zoology. The RFP, I served on the committee for the E-Rate Services. We actually had the presentations for that today. We actually had the presentations for that today, and Cheryl and her team did a fabulous job of putting that together. Two good proposers, and it'll be wonderful to see someone from the outside be able to come in and help support our staff with that project, because it sounds like it is incredibly complex and very time-consuming at certain parts of the year, and we may actually be able to make some money. So that'd be great. Next week is the RFP Committee that I'll be serving on for Temporary Staffing Services, so I will let you know how that goes.
For what?
Temporary staffing services. Tomorrow, I'll be attending the Community Alliance. I believe one of the board members, I think Ms. Almond is not able to attend, so I'll be attending that on her behalf, as well as the State Board of Education meeting down at the Orlando Airport. I'll be sitting in the back in sunglasses and a hat.
Oh, I'll be sitting in the front with no sunglasses.
Let's see. The Insurance Committee met last week, I believe. A lot of good dialogue, a lot of good feedback from our employees. They actually took a vote to, regarding the wellness incentives, they were being asked for input on what incentives and the structure, would we like to see it changed, would we like to see it stay the same? And the general consensus of the group was that they liked what was proposed, but they didn't want to see it implemented for this upcoming year. So I believe the superintendent, if he hasn't already, is going to get a recommendation that the committee voted to keep the incentives the same for this year, but the consensus of the group was to change it for 1718. I think I got that right.
By incentives, you mean?
The structure that we have right now for the, if you do your biometric screening, your, and the amount of money that you earn for the incentives to go into your HSA. I think that's it.
Great. Thank you. Well, thank you for sharing. The only committee that I represented the Board on this past week was the Mayors and Managers Meeting, and the discussion this month was Dennis Lima, where the Seminole Sheriff's Office gave us an update. And I know, Dr. Griffin, we were both very, very impressed with the technology that our Sheriff's Department has, whether it be the helicopter, that I had no idea, they can track suspects in the helicopter, and the suspect doesn't know the helicopter's there because they don't have any lights on, and you can't hear it at the level, but they can record everything. And the most impressive data point that was shared was that our crime rate continues to go down, even though our population continues to go up. So not only are we thankful to work collaboratively with the Sheriff's Office, obviously, they're doing right for the entire community, not just the School Board. So it was great to get that update. So that was it for my committee report. Moving on to public comments, we do have a few people that would like to share some thoughts with us. Vice Chairman Lockhart, yes?
The Public Input Segment of the meeting is provided to allow the public to present the School Board for consideration and referral to the Superintendent and staff for inquiry and action, or to address specific items on the agenda. The Public Input Segment of the meeting is not open to presentations of campaign issues by political candidates or others, student disciplinary actions, pending employee disciplinary matters, or pending litigation. It is not the intent of the School Board to deprive any person of his or her right of freedom of expression, however, it is the intent of the Board to promote mutual respect, civility, and orderly conduct on the part of members of the public appearing before the Board. The Board will expect positive communication and will not permit disruptive, volatile, hostile, or aggressive communication on the part of speakers. Speakers are limited to three minutes and must clearly identify the matter to be addressed on the speaker's sign-up form. Speakers should direct their comments only to the Board and may not address the audience. Speakers that do not comply with the direction will be asked to leave the lectern, and if you would please state your name and address for the record prior to making your statements.
Thank you very much. Our first speaker would be Jessica Cotrell, please. And then next will be Alexis Rap.
Jessica Cotrell, and it's 505 Rochester Street. First, I would like to begin by thanking the Board and Dr. Griffin. I appreciate your efforts to keep the community engaged. We all know that improving our schools will require the collective work of the entire community. Nothing short of a unified commitment to continuous improvement and a common purpose will result in the creation of an educational system where all children grow into thoughtful citizens of the world. To achieve this common purpose, we need to work harder to have continuing, honest dialogue. We need to explore diverse perspectives and closely examine the effects of decision, excuse me, decision-making across the system, within schools, classrooms, and among individual students. I am here tonight to say that it is essential that this Board reach out to teachers and the community in a safe and productive manner. Just as our students must feel safe to share their thinking, teachers must feel safe to share their experiences. I ask that you strive to hear from a wider audience, to gather input from those who often keep their ideas to themselves, and to seek the advice of teachers across our district who have been impacted each and every day by so many of the changes just within this school year. I am asking that you truly strive to hear the teachers' perspectives, as they have much to share, and we have much to learn about these experiences. But in order to do this effectively, we feel that you must understand that there are teachers who are not comfortable with the usual teacher surveys. They would feel more comfortable with sharing their feelings and the truth, knowing that they can do so anonymously and without anything linking back to them. Therefore, we worked with teachers to create a survey of questions that they feel would help you better understand them. Perhaps a teacher's survey similar to the one that we've created, sent via email to the principals, and then given to the teachers for them to complete anonymously, and then send back via mail, would also be able to allow you to track the survey. I know that you have to track them to make sure you get a certain percentage, I believe, but if not, some of our other options, we were thinking of on the website itself, maybe, just being able to click on it and then printing a PDF, a Word document, and then they can send it in. Something that they can feel more at ease, and, but there's no tracking, and there's no identif, identif, ugh.
Identifiable.
Yeah, you got me. But, um, yeah, they, I mean, of course, I'm not representing every teacher in Seminole County. That's insane to even say something like that. I am representing, even if I'm representing five, or 20, or, I'm still representing teachers that truly do want this. And if you don't normally hear from them, you might actually hear from them with this, and that would really help you, I think, and them.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Alexis Rap?
Dr. Griffin, while Mrs. Rap is coming up, could you tell us, would item P on our consent agenda today address the survey question? From working with Chicago?
The new input.
I have to, I have to look at that survey to answer that properly. I believe there, I know that it addresses strategic planning, morale, and several other topics, but I don't want to publicly say that it addresses the assessment precise, but I'll get that information back to you.
That would be great. Thank you.
Good evening.
Hi. Do I say my name and stuff? You have mistakes. Can you say your name and then press the button? Got it. Okay, my name is Alexis Rap, and my address is 980 Stone Creek Court. Glasses. Thank you, Dr. Griffin, and School Board members, for the opportunity to speak. I was a former teacher and curriculum consultant. Now I'm a Seminole County Public Schools parent. I was an Orange County Public Schools parent, but we've since moved, and we are happy with our decision. We continue to be happy with our decision that we did move.
Could you speak right into the microphones?
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
There you go. Awesome. We continue to be happy with the decision that we made to move to Seminole County Public Schools from Orange County Public Schools. I do have questions. Am I allowed to ask questions or enlist them? Can I? Okay, I'll just list the questions that I have, and then we can talk about them later. I would like to know, because we've received different answers, I would like to know specifically and clearly, what is the purpose of the K through 3 Iowa exam? I've heard it's for PMAs. I've also heard it's for VAM. If it's for VAM, if it's a normed referenced test and shows what kids, what kids know, not based on benchmarks, how will such a test be valid and reliable to use to evaluate teachers if it's not going to address the benchmarks? It seems to be similar to the debacle of FSA, just not to the magnitude. If it is for VAM, were teachers asked which method they would prefer to use? It was my understanding that they had some choices. I'm sorry, I'm going to PMAs. Stop that, go back. So it's my understanding that the state allowed districts to choose PMAs. And my question is, were schools allowed to choose their PMAs, or was it a district decision? I also understand that the Board was given three choices about which to use for PMAs. If they were, I'd like to know what they were. And if there were three choices, were teachers allowed input? And thank you very much.
Thank you so much. And Dr. Griffin, I think we'll be addressing some of this.
Yes.
Under, later in our meeting.
Madam Chair, the first item under my Superintendent's Report will be the Assessments for Progress Monitoring Teacher Evaluations, so we'll answer some of those questions.
You were clairvoyant, without even seeing the agenda item. Stephanie Gresham, please, and then Thomas Bugos.
Hi. I'm Stephanie Gresham. I'm from 369 Lakewood Court in Lake Mary, 32746. Like to say thank you, Mr. Griffin and the Board. This is my first time speaking. There will be a day when our students take a test that was made for them to show who they are and what they are learning. No tricks, no secrets, no confusion, and no high stakes. Until then, we are all sitting in this meeting in agreement that the Florida Standard Assessment and its counterpoint 2.0 have failed us. And every day that goes by, a movement gains momentum that has touched each district in the state of Florida. A movement that has previously been a whisper has now become a shout. Opt out. And who is hearing? Parents, teachers, elected officials, oh, and the President? Spanning the state, schools are unsure how to handle the influx of letters from parents who are having their children opt out of the tests. We're confused by cut scores, and N's, and T's, and Rs, and Tw's. Data and percentages, we have to constantly be checking and defining, but we are certain of one thing, there is no test for us. We're comparing notes at the bus stop, and soccer games, and on social media, but what will the kids do while the others are testing? Last year, some read in the library or did homework in a neighboring classroom, many sat in the front office, and many yet were picked up by their parents to avoid the unknown, receiving tardies and absences, only to be told that their student was pulled out of class another day to make up the test they were adamant about refusing. Many sat and stared at a piece of paper, at a computer screen, at their lap. My request is that the Board work with parents and administration to pull together a standard procedure for district schools to follow on testing days for students who opt out, a guideline for principals who are overwhelmed with the growing population of those children, and for the proctors of the test who aren't currently being given any direction on how to handle those students. In the absence of this protocol so far, students and teachers have been met with confused answers and often seemingly punitive actions. This year, School Board theme seems to be transparency, and that's what the parents need in all areas of testing right now, including the parents who are choosing to opt their students out. So while we are all holding our place here on this page, pushing pause on the FSA accountability, while the district works diligently on a solution, why not put the word standards to better use? Let's use it where it will give some very important students peace of mind. Standardized opt-out procedures district-wide will give relief to students, parents, administration, and teachers touched by the growing need for an alternative to the test, and begin by delegating an appropriate alternative on testing days. Opt out is not going away. It's time to recognize we're here.
Thank you so much.
Good evening.
My name is Thomas Joe Bugos II. I live at 369 Maya Street, Lake Mary. I am here this evening, first of all, thank you, Mr. Griffin, Madam Chair, and the School Board for allowing me to speak this evening. I am speaking in tonight, not as an association member, as many as you know I am, not as a teacher, as you know very well I'm a teacher. I'm here as a parent of a Seminole County student. I have two children in this district, one currently starting middle school, she's in her second quarter of middle school, and one in elementary. My most concern right now is the one in middle school. I am deeply concerned about the grading system that we are currently using in this system. The 4.0 scale, wonderful scale, if it's used correctly. It's always been used to calculate the final grade of the quarter and the semester into the end of the year. In that situation, a 100 to 90 is an A. 3.5 to a 4 correlates with that 90 to 100. Currently, in middle school that my daughter is in, an A goes from 100 to 85 percent. That significantly impacts those students at the top, because now, an A that is between a 4.0 and a 3.5 is every five tenths that they can earn up. So it's .5 between a 4 and a 3.5. But to get it B is from a 3.0 to a 3.5, and it goes by one whole tenth. So it's easier to get an A, I mean, a B, C, or D than it is to get an A. I'm not sure if I got the math exactly right, but the way it's going, it's very difficult for any student to receive an A. It's impossible for a student to get an F, almost impossible. So my daughter, who's spending hours up at night, staying up until 10:30, 11, doing homework, working as hard as she can, she is a very disciplined student and has high anxiety if she doesn't get anything higher than an A, and very much disappointed when she comes back and she sees a student that does nothing getting the same grade that she's doing. This is very, very troublesome to me. Grades have been told not to be punitive, but they have to be for accountability. A student should be able to earn an A as easily as an F. They have to put the effort in. And my daughter has two grades lower than an A this semester, or this quarter, not because she didn't put the effort in, because she missed two things, either homework or something else. And it clearly states in yours that grades should be a reflection of the student's overall performance, not failure or success on one area. And we need to adjust, address this. I'm talking to you as a parent. Next time I speak, I'm going to be speaking as a middle school teacher, and I'm going to address how I feel. It's very difficult for me to talk about a student, because I want to interchange what I know and what she's going through. But right now, you need to address this. It is easier to get a B than any other grade on our scale right now, and it's almost impossible to fail. We have to have accountability. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dr. Griffin, will Mr. Bugos's concerns be addressed in your presentation later on, or?
The quality point discussion is not part of this.
Okay.
We can, we definitely could, I know Ms. Thompson could shed some light on some of the issues.
I think it'd be great if you all could talk afterward to try and clear some of that up.
Certainly.
We've all had many discussions. Dr. Griffin, do you have any unfinished or new business, please?
No, I don't, but I'm ready for the Superintendent's Report.
Okay.
As Ms. Thompson. It looks like Ms. Borowski is going to be joining her also. Board members, you should have a hard copy of the presentation.
Good evening, Dr. Griffin, Board members. We just have just some very simple slides that are explaining what, which assignments we are utilizing at each grade level for progress monitoring, and also which ones will be calculated, for, will be using to calculate teacher evaluation. So just to make sure that everybody is, is kind of thinking the same way. For progress monitoring, students in kindergarten through grade three, the teachers will have multiple data points that will be utilizing for progress monitoring. Some of those data points will come from the Iowa Assessment, and they will also come from the Common Trimester Test that is aligned to the teachers' instructional plans for English Language Arts and Mathematics. The student data portion of the teacher evaluation will be calculated based on, from learning growth as measured by the Iowa Assessment. The Iowa Assessment is a pre-post, so we're giving the first iteration of it. Currently, now, we're finishing that up, and then we will be giving that test again in the spring, and student growth from the first test to the second test will be utilized as we build. The Iowa assessment is a pre-post, so we're giving the first iteration of it currently now, we're finishing that up, and then we will be giving that test again in the spring, and student growth from the first test to the second test will be utilized as we build a calculation model for that method for teacher evaluation.
Also known as VAM. Yes, or no?
I think, as we talk about VAM, VAM is a very complex statistical model that has many, many considerations in it, and it has all kinds of different factors. And VAM is truly calculated by the state of Florida, and it is done looking at students that take the same test all over the entire state who have the same attributes. Our school district uses modeling that is similar to the VAM model, but we do not have access to the data nor the sophisticated processes to do a true VAM model as it relates to that. So we do not use those terms interchangeably. The teacher evaluation has a portion that must be based upon student data in that calculation. For students taking the FSA test in grades four through 10, the teachers of those designated courses get a true VAM score that the state gives to us. For teachers outside of, who teach courses outside of those limits, we as the district are charged with having an assessment, developing a model, and then simulating those scores in a way that is fair and equitable to teachers across the board.
Because it shows learning gains.
Yes, ma'am. We are moving towards models that are all based on growth, because the models that we're using in grades four through 10 are all based on growth metrics from prior year to the next year. So we have implemented in those areas that don't have a VAM score, the opportunity to develop growth scores rather than scores that are just based on a one-time proficiency score. So that's what we're, our district is moving towards.
Well, and it also tests what the teacher has actually taught throughout the year as opposed to a school-wide.
Yeah, we are no longer allowed to just say, to give teachers a score. Their scores are based on the students that are enrolled in their class.
Which is what it should be.
And the scores that they earned. So it's all based on the teachers, the students that are enrolled for that teacher. Okay? In grades four through five, progress monitoring is based upon the Common Trimester Test that's aligned to the instructional plans for English Language Arts and Math, and the Common Trimester Test aligned to the instructional plans for Science. So those are our progress monitoring metrics. The student data portion of the teacher evaluations is the VAM measurement, because that is what's calculated by the state based upon the Florida Standards Assessment. Okay? In middle school, our progress monitoring mechanism are the Common Nine Week Tests. Those Common Nine Week Tests are aligned to the instructional plans in English Language Arts, Mathematics, Science, and Social Studies. And the student data portion of the evaluation is based on VAM metric as determined by the DOE off the Florida Standards Assessment. Same model appear is also in place for grades nine and 10. We have Common Nine Week Tests aligned to the instructional plans in English Language Arts, Mathematics, Science, and Social Study for ninth and 10th graders, and the student data portion is a growth metric on the FSA. For grades 11 and 12, the progress monitoring methods there are the Common Nine Week Test aligned to the instructional plans in Standard and Honors in United States History in 11th Grade, and teacher-designed assessments aligned to instructional plans in English Language Arts, Math, Science, and Social Studies. The student data portion of the teacher evaluation is learning growth as measured by college entrance and readiness tests. So there is not a state-delivered test in those areas.
Board members, are there questions before we go on to the next phase?
Vice Chairman Lafferty.
Okay, so if you wouldn't mind, I think the common assessments, if you could just tell us how those were created, and how they're being implemented, and how they may be different from what we've done in the past or not, can you just elaborate on that a little bit?
Absolutely. For progress monitoring in the past, we utilized discovery education, and discovery education was aligned to, or when we were giving the FCAT, discovery education had a close alignment to the state mandated test at the end. So it was closely aligned to the FCAT reading test, closely aligned to FCAT math. So the teachers would give those tests, the data they got back to that showed readiness for the FCAT test, for the FCAT test at the end. The discovery education test, however, was not closely aligned with the content that the teacher was teaching that nine weeks. So often, we would find that students were taking on discovery education, they were experiencing items and curriculum standards that were not part of the instructional plan for that course during that nine weeks. So those tests informed what, with FCAT, kind of a predictive look at what, how the student might perform on the FCAT as we moved towards that test. Last year, as we moved to FSA, we had a discovery education test, but we didn't know how closely it was aligned to the standards being measured on the FSA. So we implemented discovery education last year. Discovery education changed their assessment, and what we found is that the tests were no longer able to be taken in the same, in one single class period. It was becoming very intrusive upon the electronic and computer resources, because those were all computer-based tests, and they were taking more than one class period. So we started looking at, what are we getting back from that? Well, we thought it was aligned, it might have been aligned, but we knew what it was costing us instructionally. So, and our teachers had been asking for some, they needed some feedback on how the kids learned the standards that we just taught, because discovery education didn't do that. So as we made the decision to focus our progress monitor less on, to have it not be discovery education, we needed a progress monitoring tool that would allow teachers to have insight into the standards that they were being taught on the instructional plan, and how those students were doing on those standards as measured towards the end of that nine weeks. So as we talked through this process, it became clear to us, is we are, at the end of spring, our students are going to be taking the Florida Standards Assessment, and I use, kind of use the metaphor, our kids are going to run a marathon come the spring. All year long, we have to make sure then that we are training them to be able to have the practice they need, the in-depth knowledge that they're getting to practice rigor and thought, and the critical processes that will help make them successful on what we know is a highly challenging academic test. So as we developed the Common Nine Week Exams, we did so with the idea that these tests were an opportunity for students to experience rigor, and that our teachers would be building in some of these rigorous assessments into their regular classroom instruction. But as we got to the end, and it gave us that glimpse on how these students will be performing on highly rigorous items when we encounter them in the spring. We need to know now where our strengths and weaknesses are, and start building that expectation for where we're going to be. So that was kind of our, as we kind of worked with teaching and learning, with leadership as we put these together. Over the summer, as is the practice typically, the English Language Arts and Mathematics instructional plans were updated. So as that work took place in the summer, and those curriculum frameworks were created, our teaching and learning specialist worked with teachers and trained them on the standards, on the instructional plans, and those teachers built the instructional plans and the lessons that were embedded within those instructional plans. That same group of core teachers who were highly familiar with the standards, highly familiar with the IPs, were then tasked with working with members of our assessment and accountability team, district teaching and learning specialist, and they came together, and then we selected and wrote items for the Common Nine Week Exams that are all aligned to standards. So we put those tests together at that point. The tests were then reviewed by the curriculum specialist, by members of our team. The tests were then released to teachers approximately two weeks prior to the testing windows for that, so that teachers had an opportunity to go out and get them and see them, and kind of see the information that was on the test, that is, again, aligned to their instructional plans. So based upon that, we implemented the test utilizing EdInsight, which is our local assessment platform. Teachers had the option of giving them paper-based or computer-based. Many of them chose paper-based, so that that way we wouldn't be tying up computer resources for testing, which is one of the reasons we wanted to go a different direction from DE, so it allowed us that flexibility in determining that. So that, and that was, that was the implementation process for the test, and kind of what students experienced and teachers experienced during that time. I know that was a very long answer.
No, that's okay. It was very good. I have, I have two things on that. One is an editorial comment that frankly, I am more concerned that our students are finishing up the year having learned what we want them to learn. I personally don't give a rip about what's on the FSA, but that's just me. I know we need to prepare them, and I know that's, you know, but I'm not, if we teach them what they need to know, that's the important thing, because we want them, having left a school year, educated.
Right.
Regardless of what test may be coming at the end of the year. But that's just my editorial comment. I picked up on something that you said about the instructional plans changing over the summer, and I want to make sure that I'm picturing in my mind how this happened. So if you were a teacher who was not a part of that group that delved into the instructional plans and the changes and creating these common assessments, how, how would that have impacted your preparation for this school year and your lesson plans? Would, I guess, how would those teachers that were not a part of that know to have amended, or how much were they going to be expected to amend their lesson plans based on the instructional plan changes? I'm just, I'm, you know, we're hearing from folks that there's perhaps been a disconnect, and I'm trying to figure out where that might have happened. Was it at that point over the summer that maybe the, the teachers didn't know that the instructional plans had been modified? How?
How was that communicated?
The Department of, the Department of Teaching and Learning oversees the, all the changes and updates to the instructional plans, and as those instructional plans are updated and rolled out, they have communication methods that they're working with directly, emails to teachers, department chairs, principals, assistant principals to let them know that those things have changed, and they provide those, that information to them. That information is shared on eCampus, and teachers can go out and get that. The, there was a call for teachers to come and participate in the summer work. That happened early last spring, so that teachers were made aware that the instructional plans were being updated for ELA and mathematics.
They knew in the spring that the plans were going to be updated?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And they knew in the spring that there was going to be some updates and some changes to those plans, and so we, I believe Dr. Wilson's office reached out, asking for volunteer teachers to come and work, to be trained in that process. And then those teachers have continued to work, they continued to work over the summer and to get all those things finalized and finished up. We came in, once the instructional plan was done and out and shared with, with teachers, then we just invited those same teachers to come back in and work with us because of their familiarity with the standards that were included, because we want to test that, as you said before, you care about what the kids learn. Well, what they're learning is the lessons and the standards that are being presented every day in the instructional plans and the lessons. And so these tests are aligned to those standards, not to, I mean, they have high level of rigor, which, because we want that for our students, but it does tell the teachers, if I taught these standards, here's how our students did on those standards with a high level of rigor at this point, and we expect students to grow.
Right.
And to grow towards that.
And then, in the off-chance that there were teachers who maybe due to pacing or some other reason were not able to cover all of the material that would have been in the instructional plan for that first nine weeks, and they looked at the exam and they saw that there were questions on there that they did not cover, did, how much flexibility did our teachers have with that exam?
The teachers had, what we asked the teachers to do is to give the test, let the students try the items. And then, once the, once the test was done and it was in the EdInsight system, the teachers had complete discretion to work with their PLC administrator to take a look at kind of what was there and to make decisions. They could, they could have excluded any questions they felt weren't appropriate that they didn't get to. We shared repeatedly with our groups that the determination of the grade the student earned on these assessments was entirely at the discretion of the teacher. They could adjust the grades, curve the grades, take questions off the score as they felt was appropriate based upon being the expert of that student's learning in that classroom.
Okay, fabulous. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments, board members? Okay, great. Thank you.
The next part of the presentation, Sarah is going to do some demonstrating for you of, now that the nine-week assessments are done and that data is in EdInsight, what are some of the reports that teachers can go out and get, or that administrators can get, that kind of give them some insight into student performance, and also to kind of help guide them in some decision-making as they move forward to the second nine weeks?
Good evening. The first report that is available for teachers in EdInsight is called the Student Assessment Administration Results by Teacher. The amazing thing about using EdInsight is that as soon as a student has completed the test, either by computer, or the test has been scanned into the system, the teacher has immediate feedback as to how the student performed on the assessment. So this is a sample of the, what a teacher could pull, the first thing they want to look at. I know it is small, but there's a lot of things that, let's take a look at it. For example, it has the, how each, each question, if you hover over the numbers, you could see the question that would be on the test. If you hover over the asterisk, which this is a static, if you hover over here, it tells you the standard associated with the question. It tells you at what percent your students, how they performed on each question alone. So you could take a look at it quickly and say, okay, I'm looking at question three, I see 53% of my students performed well on that. Let me take a look at the question, let me look at the standard, let me make a decision. Is this something that I know that I've covered in my class? And if I want to say no, I feel that I did not get enough time. The check mark down below that shows exclusions, I could check mark this exclusion, hit generate, and the question has been removed from my averages. So this is a very powerful tool that you could take a look at it individually or as a PLC, and make some powerful decisions as to next steps and whether, now that I know the results, how can I take it to the next level? Do I need to reteach any elements from this test? As a teacher, I would pull up question three the next day perhaps, and show, okay, students, this is how you did, this is a question from the test, let's take a look at it, let's go ahead and see, how would we, how would we, how would we answer this question now? Let's take a look in depth and then give feedback on that. So it's definitely a reteaching moment, it's not like DE is a one-time and go. This is an absolute close feedback that you can use it to talk a few teachers about.
Sarah, you just hit on something very important, is that the expectation is that these tests will be reviewed with the students, by the teachers. This is not something that is secretive, this is not some, this is supposed to, this is a formative assessment.
Absolutely.
That's very, very important.
The tests will not leave the classroom, we're not going to make copies to go home, but we are definitely going to work with the questions in the classroom in small groups and data talks in PLCs. So it's definitely not a secret, it's not locked in somebody's closet. Every teacher in EdInsight could pull up a copy of the test, that it is visible. We ask that it doesn't get sent out in published places, but definitely for classroom purposes, it is completely available.
And the, and the reason that we don't want it published and sent out or taken home is because there may be questions that want to be reused, not because we don't want people to see it necessarily?
Absolutely. We're going to go through a process of looking at the questions, looking at the stats, and building a bank of questions to be reused, if some items may be reused based on performance.
Well, I think this is powerful because it's by student, right? Because you want to individualize instruction, and the way you really can reteach it, it has to be in a timely fashion.
Absolutely.
And so if you're getting the results in timely fashion, you don't have to go to the next school year when you're on a different subject to come back. That could be a basis that you needed to be able to progress correctly in a successful manner, so.
The next one that I recommend for teachers to look at is called Item Analysis by Question. This is one of the reports that we take a look at, we want to know, not that A, Johnny got the answer correct or incorrect, we want to know why do they take a look at it? So the Item Analysis, Analysis Report allows you to, if you hover over the question, once again, it pops up, but it tells me that on this question one, 125 students got B correct, but 11 students picked C, six picked D, one skipped the question. So I may want to know which of my students picked C, so I could actually delve into, and I could see the 11 students who struggled with that. Also attached to it is the standards. So I could go ahead, if I'm planning as a teacher and I want to do remediation, I could pull up those 11 students and say, I know that they need help on this standard, provide targeted differentiated instruction to those students, and then they could have remediation onto that skill. Also, as a teacher, looking at question two, I could see that 16 answered C, B is 25. What was it about that distractor that made them think that C was a possible answer? So we could look at, I could pull the question up and use it as a teachable moment, and say, okay, let's really delve deep into the analysis behind it. What's C? Why did you think it was C? And by teaching them that- And by teaching them that, when they do come up to an assessment, they can understand the thought process. Finally, there is a report available to parents that it's by request that they can, all teachers can print this out. And what this shows, it shows you the official result on it, does not show the exclusion. So if a teacher excluded 10 questions or two questions from it, it shows the whole test. And so we've got to be careful about looking at the percents, because the percent on this may not be the percent in the grade book. It's prior to any curving and fixing and adjustments of the grades. What this does show, parents, is that it shows them each question, it marks question one, what the correct answer is, the student answer, but more importantly, it shows the standards. So as a parent, I could log in and I could see what that standard looks like. We could go to Sea Palms, pull the standard, and on Sea Palms, it has recommended practices on how to provide help to your student. As an instructional coach, I used to always get phone calls from parents, how can I assist my student? How can we help them? This is telling me as a parent, this is how I can help my child. They struggled with these strands, and assistance could be easily available to help.
That's powerful.
It's very-
I mean, it's almost like a mini-con academy without having him standing there, but, I mean, to really have us work together as a team, rather than to just drill and fill all night long doing certain problems, if you only need help on one area, that should be the area that you need to spend time on tap.
Absolutely. And then moving on to the second, some of the same standards are going to be part of the second quarter exam, so then we could see the process and the growth happening.
Any other comments or questions, board members? Excellent presentation. Thanks for clarifying. I know there's been a lot of changes this year and a lot of confusion perhaps in communication, so I think it's really good that perception becomes reality of just having the facts. And I appreciate you sharing that with us tonight.
Madam Chair, that concludes my report. The remaining items, B, C, and D are read-only items.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to board member comments. Member Schaffner, do you have anything to share before we conclude?
Lots going on right now. My favorite, one of my favorite nights is the marching band festival. That was a week ago Saturday. Every one of our high school marching bands perform. We were at Seminole High, they rotated each year. And at one point, though, there were 1,800 teenagers on the football field playing the National Anthem. And I'm telling you, if that doesn't send chills up and down your back, I don't know what will. It was absolutely awesome. The whole evening was awesome. The weather was gorgeous. It was a packed house. But it's just a great opportunity for our bands to show their stuff. And they are going to be going in the next couple of weeks to state competitions and other opportunities for competition, so that's one of my very favorite nights. All of us were over at the Lake Mary High School manufacturing ribbon cutting that they had over there. That is an awesome program. What a great opportunity for students that are not necessarily interested in going on to become a brain surgeon, but they are looking for a skill, a job, that they're going to be able to have. All the equipment in that manufacturing lab and all that they're planning on bringing into it is absolutely exceptional. It's a great opportunity for kids. Over the weekend, I also went to the ECTAC, and that stands for Elevating and Celebrating Effective Teachers and Learning, Teachers and Teaching. They had a program going on over at Winter Springs High School of teachers, sharing with each other the way that they're teaching certain skills. It's a great opportunity. The Ovita Mall had a STEM demonstration and a STEM exhibit, and we had a lot of our schools, elementary, middle, and high school participating in that. And it really blew your mind when you went to see what some of our students are doing. I mean, they had robotics going on there, they had all kinds of activities, and it was a great eye-opener. The fun part was watching the little kids come in and play with the, they had all kinds of things you could play with there, including a snake, which I wasn't interested in. But they, and that was the Environmental Studies Center. But the little ones coming in, getting excited about, is this what I'm going to do when I go to school? It was really, it was neat. And elementary, middle, and high, all the way up, and it's got more and more sophisticated as you went along. Great opportunity for our schools to show off what they're doing. And then I have a question I needed to ask you, Dr. Griffin, totally unrelated to this. In this, in the past week, I have had parents from two different schools, or teachers from two different schools, talk to me about students who are not picked up on time and are there in the front office for, today we heard about one for three hours after school is out. And I know we have signs in all of our schools that say supervision starts, I think it's 30 minutes before school, 30 minutes after school. So the question, one question that was posed to me was, can we charge parents that don't pick up their children within a reasonable amount of time? And I know that sometimes, you know, you get caught behind a train or whatever it may be, but this is getting out of hand.
Yes.
And it's an imposition on teachers. It's an imposition on office staff, because we don't have office staff necessarily there until 6 o'clock. These are not children that are in our after-school care. They're just sitting there for hours in the office, and it's not just one time.
That's right.
This is going on. So I think that we need to do something to look into this, and I don't know if we can charge. So Rita, that would be a question to you.
And I wouldn't recommend that. As we, as far as supervision, there's a certain amount of time where we're saying that we are not supervising. And so to then charge, I think, is contradictory. But I am happy to work with the superintendent to think of some things that could better assist the schools.
Because as long as we continue to do it without some kind of a penalty of some sort, and certainly, I'm not going to turn the kids out, because that's, we are about safety for children, but just something that we need to explore.
I've heard the same thing, Ms. Schaffner. We have, one school had three students after 6 o'clock.
Yes.
And we had another one at 5:30. And this is several hours after school is dismissed. It really becomes a, it's a safety issue.
Right.
So I would really encourage us to look at doing something, because it's just not fair to our staffs. I understand an occasional emergency.
And we all do.
But, and I believe the one principal told us that it was the same student more than one time.
Right. Thank you.
Okay, sure. Member Bauer?
Yeah, just real quick to piggyback on what Ms. Schaffner said, the ribbon cutting at Lake Mary was amazing. And we're talking about giving students who may or may not be college-bound the skills that they will need, you know, talking with a couple of the instructors there and a couple people, the business advisors there. You know, these kids will get out, without a college degree, will be able to make upwards of $50,000 the first year out, and that's just amazing. And that was really enlightening, because the technology they have there is far and away different from what I remember machine shop being when I was at Lake Howl, so. And on the Lake Howl front, I was happy to join the rest of the board and Dr. Griffin and some of the staff at the Lake Howl Aquatic Center groundbreaking. And I'm just flabbergasted by the facility that they're going to have there. I just hope it's done in time for them to have their graduation pool party, that they've been promised.
The seniors feel the same way.
That's the seniors' goal.
That's it for me.
Vice Chairman Lockhart?
There has been a lot going on. I think Mrs. Schaffner mentioned a lot of it. But the Seminole County Regional Chamber just had their annual mayor's update, and they, every year, I think that's probably one of the most loved events, because for those of you who don't know our mayors, they are a trip. They're fun to be around, they're very engaging, they get along together so well. And each one of them made it a point, as a part of their presentation, to talk about how much the school district means to the viability of their community and how much they enjoy working with us, and really commended our teachers and our staff for doing the job that they do. Many of the mayors noted that some of the larger companies that came to their cities for economic development purposes, they were very excited about that, and they noted it was about the schools. So kudos to our mayors, and I look forward to next year.
Absolutely.
Never a dull moment.
Oh, no.
They have a good time with each other, too.
They do.
It's better than any comedy show you'd ever pay for. I'm just saying. But ditto to everything that's already been shared, but one of my favorite experiences this school year so far was getting to take 60 children from Hamilton Elementary on Sunrail with our executive leadership team and spend the day at the Orlando Science Center. It really grounds you. And, you know, we're in the classrooms every day, but to actually spend an entire day with certain children and to hear their stories, they're so open of, yeah, I live in a foster home, or, yeah, I don't know who my parents are. Or we got to the dinosaur area where you were brushing like little rubber chips off of defined excavation for a dinosaur. One boy said, is this what a beach is like? I mean, he's never seen a beach, so we were covering him up with like it was sand for him to experience my favorite part of the day, Miss Cardona, as we got off of Sunrail in Sanford, this little girl with big eyes just looked up and said, this was the best day of my entire life. And so you know that it's going to stay with them for a long, long time, and I'd love to even go back to the school in a while and see how did that day affect change for the students? Because these children were offered the trip if they came to school, because they were in truant situations and got to school on time and didn't have any behavior issues. So if that one little investment of a day can change a child's trajectory, it was worth all the time and all the teen china to do that. So thank you for letting me be a part of that, Dr. Griffin. It was phenomenal. And we had all business partners-
Dr. Griffin, you were on that trip, too, right?
I was on that trip, too.
And, boy, did he have a little mini-me with him. He understood math and computers and everything else. Also, really proud of our teammates within Seminole County Public Schools. They give so much of themselves every single day, but they also give back to causes. And I went to the kickoff of the Relay for Life and even had the keynote speaker, who was our assistant principal from Rock Lake, you know, sharing his story. And so many of our school people lead teams to raise money for those less fortunate in our community. I love handing out service pins, as many of you do, and to see how many teachers and staff members we've had here for so many decades. It's just an honor to serve them all. And we had a special treat when we were at Midway Elementary for the service pins. The city of Sanford actually proclaimed that day Ron Nathan Day. Because he was teacher, I mean, principal of Seminole County Schools, and Norton Bonaparte came and read a proclamation. And the best part, we hid behind boxes, Ron's mother, his wife, his brother, and some people he went to school with, so of course, you know, may I cry at everything? So that was just a real touching moment. And his mother is a doll baby, so that was a great opportunity for me. And I shared with each of you an email, because I didn't want to waste too much time tonight, but the Central Florida Leadership Meeting that I go to, which is an open meeting for anyone to attend, but I will continue to share all the presentations that are shared during those meetings, because I think it's powerful, because we are a part of a larger community, and there's a lot of work going on other than education. But as we know, through the manufacturing lab or through many other things that we do, it touches us all. Leadership Seminole held their leadership circle, and one of the leaders that was actually leading the day was our own Dr. Griffin, and his table was standing room only. There were other leaders of CEOs of other companies, but the business community wanted to hear all the great work that Dr. Griffin was doing, so I wanted to say thank you for that. Had the opportunity to speak with the League of Women Voters. They had asked for an updated presentation on the Seminole Solution, and very well received as well. And DeeDee and I were at the Hagerty Homecoming. It just is so great to see how, as large as we are as a school district, we're still small communities. When you had all the elementary school students lining the streets with, you know, pom-poms or whatever, to be able to experience, and there was one whole grade level had class of 2025, wasn't it, DeeDee? So they had all these third graders. So begin with the end in mind, right? So you've got them all thinking that they're going to be Hagerty High graduates in a short while. So that was a powerful experience for me as well. And for the day before we got onto Sunrail, we had the ability, because for our teachers had a professional development day. I know every school did a little bit different, but kudos to Crystal Lake and Stenstrom, who had the entire day on blended learning. And they even invited in their PTA and SAC members to learn that as well. And that's what I thought was so powerful when we went to Seminole, I mean, Lake Mary High School, the Future Ready District Meeting. So thank you to the team, because that evening was phenomenal. We had over 500 attendees, I think, of parents, and I've never seen such professional handouts, sessions, coordination. So kudos to our entire leadership team for putting that together, all the breakout sessions, and obviously, Lake Mary High School for hosting it. So that was great. Anything further from you, Dr. Griffin? Okay. I will make an announcement. And our next point in our agenda is our school board calendars. And let the record reflect, please, the November 2nd, 2015, at 12:30 PM, insurance work session has been canceled. Thank you. Member Lockhart? It has been moved to 12:15. Okay?
The date, December 15th, not the time.
Right.
Got it.
Hey, wait a minute. December?
December 15th. It is listed on our board book that it's supposed to occur in November, but it has been moved to December.
Got you.
Okay. And Ms. Beaman, do you have some information to share with us?
Yes, board members, I have two issues that I need to address. The first is that it's come to my attention that there may be some computation issues as it relates to the superintendent's contract, and I'd request the board to authorize me to address that issue and to potentially seek appropriate documentation from the superintendent.
Do you need a motion for that?
Yes.
I saw move.
Second.
There's a motion, second, further discussion or questions. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those like sign motion carries unanimously.
Board members, I am also in need of advice concerning litigation, specifically three matters. One, the Lambert matter, which is pending in the Middle District Court, the Hawkins matter in the Seminole County Circuit Court, and the Velez versus School Board matter in the Seminole County Circuit Court. And I'm requesting that we meet on November 17th. I do believe that there is availability in closed session to discuss those matters.
And what time is that?
2:30.
2:30. Thank you.
Two to four.
At 2:00 on November 17th, a closed executive session for legal matters. Thank you, board members, for marking that.
Strategic Plan at one, Strategic Plan has been moved to January 12.
Good memory.
Great. Anything further to come before the board? Seeing none, this meeting stands adjourned. Thank you, everyone.